Consideration of the March 31st, 2024 report of Lake County pooled investment. And Patrick Sullivan and Liz Martinez are coming up. Good morning.
Good morning. We also have Carlos Obleta from Chandler Asset Management on Zoom here, and he's going to be able to run through the presentation if your board's ready.
We are ready. Good morning.
Good morning.
Are you able to share your screen or are we putting up the presentation?
I'm able to share my screen if you're ready for me now.
Yes, we are.
Okay, fantastic. Give me just a moment. And what I'd like to do is just start with this overview of the overall investment program. I think it's always helpful to know that there are numerous components to the overall investment program. This is the consolidated view. This tells you all the money that the investment pool has under its command currently. It's 530, let me zoom in, that might be helpful. It's 500, almost $534 million when we include accrued interest. There's a couple of things that I want to highlight here, which I'm going to explain. You remember that there's a component where we manage a piece of it? And then there's a component where the treasurer manages a portion of it directly. And then there's various cash accounts that are kept liquid in order to meet day-to-day liquidity needs of the district. When I combine everything together, that comes up to the 533,863 million. That's currently earning a purchase yield of 513. But I think that in past meetings, we've discussed that there is a component of this investment program. It's cash that's held at Wells Fargo Bank, which we're not managing. But your treasurer was proactive in setting up an automated money market sweep with that component. I think that amount is about $60 million as of March 31st. And that amount is earning a yield of somewhere around 5.1, which is not being fed into this 3.13 number because we just have no way of capturing that. We've been working with, just with the treasurer and the bank, and also our operations team to see if we're able to get that fed into there. But to give you an idea, that component, when the actual yield on the cash in the bank is being earned, that brings this number here to 3.7. So the yield of maturity, that interest income that you're due to earn for the coming year if nothing changes, currently is quite strong. And when we include that cash component, it brings it up to 3.7. That's a pretty competitive number. So you're seeing some pretty competitive rates, the highest we've seen in about 15 years. We're currently reinvesting program-wide, including all the cash components, at somewhere around four, almost 4.5%. So pretty strong return, well, I should say yield, which is your earnings rate, and a very high credit quality. You're averaging a AA plus. So when we look at the overall program, the key factors here is it is very, very well diversified. And the components here, this was done on purpose. Every color that you see in this pie chart was, the amount that you see there was deliberately decided in terms of diversification, in terms of identifying how much risk is being taken on for every component, and then, of course, what kind of return we're going to get. As I mentioned, we don't manage the entire portfolio as your investment advisor. We simply just manage the components that are securities. So that's everything in here except for this local government investment pool. This LAF here, Local Agency Investment Fund, is the state pool. And then, of course, all the cash which currently sits at the bank. Everything else, of course, is an investment security. It carries a return that it provides to you over the long term. These are debt securities, they're bonds, which means that you're lending money to the issuer. And at maturity, that money comes back to you. And while that issuer is using that money, they pay you rent on it, they pay you income. I started here rather than on the economy because I think it's always good to go back and see what the different components are doing. This is what you look like on a consolidated basis. And I'm going to skip this piece right here. But just take a look and see, when you look at the liquidity, this is the term structure of the entire program, the 530-plus million dollars that I just mentioned. You've got about a little bit over 35%, so just a little bit over a third of it, coming due within the next 90 days as of March. So a lot of liquidity. Obviously, this was as a run-up as we were nearing April 1st, or April 10th, I should say, when your treasury collects property taxes. So this is going to get outsized. And through the course of the year, of course, this gets spent down as the pool participants and the county utilizes its cash to meet its obligations. And again, this is the history of that yield. This would actually be a little bit higher, that 3.13, when we include that cash component where we're not capturing that yield, is really 3.7. When we look at the different components, the component that we manage on your behalf, that's 374 of that 500 million-plus part. We're currently picking up 3.10 on it. We're reinvesting somewhere around 5.03, and it's very high credit quality. I want to remind you that there's a strategy to this portfolio. We maintain this portfolio somewhere near with a duration of somewhere around 1.7 years. We're at 1.67, we're just slightly short of the benchmark. We rebalance every month or periodically. That's going to get bumped back up a little bit higher than that. Obviously, as maturities come in, the portfolio gets shorter every day. We call that aging, it ages every day. So we have to rebalance periodically to that target. When you look at, so these are the pieces that we manage. I'll tell you that most of the performance in the portfolio, most of the strong performance that you've seen have come from the corporate sector and the asset-backed sector here. The reason is because these are, they're non-governmental securities that, you know, it costs them a little more to finance themselves. When you've got Apple or you've got Microsoft borrowing money from the capital markets, it costs them a little more than the government. And for that reason, they pay a little bit of a higher yield. And that's been a very strong component in the portfolio. To that end, I do want to back up to that piece where we have all the consolidated. And I just want to zoom in really quickly. So this is what every issuer in the portfolio looks like right now in the entire program. The United States government is by far the biggest, the biggest piece of your portfolio. This cash is that, that 11% is that Wells Fargo that's earning the about 5.1, which brings your yield up. You can see that all, these are all governmental agencies. But when we start getting out of this and the local government investment pools, when we start getting into the corporate bonds here, anything that's below the pools and also governmental securities, everything is very, we just slice and dice it very small. We don't like to have our eggs in one basket. And you can see that in most instances, our exposure to anything that's not a governmental security tends to be very, very small. We just like to, we firm believer in diversification. I want to go back to that breakdown. This is, so we mentioned that this is the portion that we manage on your behalf. We did establish a little side portfolio. Some of the funds that you were keeping in pools and at the bank, you were earning, and particularly in the state pool, Local Agency Investment Fund, the yield was a little lower. We collaborated with your Treasury Tax Collector to set up a separate account to handle some of those more liquid assets, understanding that these would be held to maturity and that these were going to be spent down at some point soon. You can see that those are currently picking up 5.38% per year, and we're reinvesting at a very, very similar rate. The reason this is happening is because there's an anomaly that we've talked about. It's called the inverted yield curve. It's just an anomaly where shorter-term investments are paying more than longer-term, and this is why we set this up. We wanted to capture this, working in conjunction with your Treasury Tax Collector. We collaborated to get that done. When we look at that, all of that component is treasuries. So we're managing this component on your behalf. And then the component that we're not managing, this is the 107 million that includes cash. It includes the local government investment pools. It includes the state pool money, and that's averaging somewhere around 2.09. When we bump this up, this is the part that would go up higher because of that sweet vehicle yield that we're not capturing. I want to back up and go to the economics and kind of explain the key things about all of this. I think the key things are that we're leaving, we're leaving in a time of volatility as rates move up and down. These are two, five, and 10-year treasury yields, and they've been very, very volatile. And most of this volatility has been caused because investors are trying to figure out when the Federal Reserve will start lowering interest rates. It's generally anticipated that the Federal Reserve will have to lower interest rates. Interest rates are the highest they've been in about 15 years, and that makes for very tight financial conditions. They do that by changing something called the federal funds rate. They manipulate it and they set a target for it. The target is called the federal funds target rate. But this is this yield right here on the right, or this chart on the right-hand side. They raised those rates to combat inflation that came about at the end of the pandemic. And now they're in the process of maybe reversing, walking some of that back. At some point, we anticipate that they will start lowering interest rates. That will signal to the markets that the economy is not as strong, and they need to stimulate it by lowering rates, making it cheaper for investors and businesses to borrow money to help move the economy along. We're not quite there yet, so that's the reason you're seeing this volatility. There's that yield curve and the inversion that I talked about. Shorter-term yields are currently paying you higher yields than longer-term treasuries. So what is the economy doing to sort of drive what the Fed is thinking about? Well, despite the fact that, you know, normally they would, you would think the Fed would lower interest rates when, you would lower interest rates when the economy is slowing down, and you would raise interest rates when it's heating up to combat inflation. And so, you know, you would expect that right now the economy is slowing down and they would need to lower rates. Well, that isn't quite happening yet. If you look at it from a labor perspective, we're still having strong, better-than-expected labor numbers. In March, we generated 303,000 jobs. In April, that moderated, we don't have the April number up here. It moderated into the 200,000 range. But it's still very, very strong labor numbers. Inflation is still, when you look at the Fed's measure, the chart on the right-hand side, personal consumption expenditures, that is still above the Federal Reserve's target of 2%, which shows you that they're still strengthening the economy. The consumer sector, as measured by retail sales, retail sales have made a little bit of a comeback, and they're stronger. They're skewed by these post-pandemic numbers here. But when you zoom in just on this section, they're sort of normalizing and coming back strong. When you look at housing, housing has had a little bit of a comeback in prices. There's still demand for housing. And then, of course, and this is an interesting one, this is a survey number, just trying to see where manufacturing is. When these numbers are in the gray area, it's contracting. And I just want to highlight here, very short, and just very small piece right here, manufacturing is starting to make a comeback, moving into expansion territory. So why am I showing you this? I'm showing you this because you would expect that the Fed would lower interest rates if the economy is weakening, but it's not showing a lot of signs of weakness. What it is showing, though, is that consumers are still resilient, jobs are still strong. But at some point, these high interest rates that we see here, this high Fed funds rate, and as a result, these high interest rates that we've seen, the highest we've seen in a long time, will have a toll on consumers, will slow things down. And at some point, the Federal Reserve will have to start thinking about lowering interest rates. And what it means for you is that when they do that, when they do that, it'll mean that your existing holdings will go up in value because you've picked up higher income streams, higher yields. But of course, future reinvestment will be at a lower pace. When will that happen? The Chandler Asset Management view is that we might see some of that occur towards the end of the year. There may be one move, going back to this chart, it may be one move, perhaps two moves, to lower interest rates. There's a camp within our investment team that thinks that we'll see the Fed start to move this June. I'm not in that camp personally, but I do believe with a firm view that we'll see at least one, perhaps two easings, or that's the term for it, lower Fed funds target rate through the course of the year. So in the meantime, what we do to combat that and to make sure that we continue earning is we diversify. And even though we're getting a little bit of a lower yield in the longer maturities, we still buy them and we still have the exposure out as far as we can to be able to protect the income stream. If we keep too much too short, a lot of this will get spent down. But if we keep too much too short, we'll lose yield on this piece faster if interest rates do start to fall, and we'll be forced to reinvest at a lower rate. And this is why we diversify. That's what I have to share with you today. Let me pause there and stop sharing, and perhaps there's some questions that I may be able to answer.
Thank you very, thank you very much for your presentation, Mr. Sullivan. Just wanted to check in if you had any additions.
Yeah, I do have additional material that I can share here. So Carlos, have you ended your screen sharing?
Yeah.
Yes, I have.
So I can put up the figures just locally here. This is the chart I've shared with your board previously. It reflects the quarterly interest over the last few years, just from the beginning of the investment program that we set in motion to where we're at now. So I would just highlight that we mentioned before how you'd see some drops. For instance, two quarters ago, we brought in just under 3.7, then it dropped to under 3.5. Now it's, you know, continuing that upward trend, close to 4.4 million. And that is because of the type of securities that we hold. Interest payments come in twice a year, those payments on bonds, so it's that irregular flow. So we're continuing to trend upwards, and I wanted to highlight this since you saw that small drop last time. And I would expect to continue to see that, that we may go up and down as we increase. We would still expect to increase over the course of the next year as our portfolio continues to drop those older maturities that Carlos was showing, that are existing at those lower interest rates. When we reinvest them, we're picking up those higher rates. At some point, that may shift. If rates come down, we're going to level off. But until the Fed starts dropping the rate, I don't know when that's going to be. The other point I wanted to bring up is that, as we shared, there's that liquidity portion, that smaller, that piece where we're holding it for a shorter amount of time. In some ways, we'd like to trim that, but just given the reality of the state of affairs in California, I don't see that happening. One of the concerns we have is the state budget deficit. We have those irregularities, and when we receive payments from the state, we have concerns that those could increase. We also don't have all the answers we need about local spending because just remember, our treasury pool includes schools and other agencies. So if anything, that liquidity portion is probably going to stay where it is, or perhaps even increase. Fortunately, right now, what's in that liquid pool exists, as mentioned, the Wells Fargo account, where we have the sweep for money market, but also the government pools, which are all earning a fairly high rate. I mean, even LAF, I believe, is up to 4.5% now. Those other pools are earning in the 5.4 to 5.5 category. So I don't have any concerns about a real loss of revenue by being more liquid. But in the long term, that could become more of a struggle. As rates begin to drop, we want to decrease that liquid portion of portfolio. And until we have more details and answers, and until some of those funding situations at the state are resolved, that's going to be hard for us to do. So I just wanted to share that, and I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Piska?
I think this is everybody's favorite graph.
It's a good graph.
And I really appreciate seeing the portfolio change so much over the last few years. At one point, it was one color. And so thank you for all of that, Carlos. A question that I get asked is where is this money going? And I know, Patrick, you and I have talked about this, but we are seeing these earnings, and we're about to go into budget hearings next month. And so can you talk a little bit about where this is all going in our county budget?
So just to keep in mind, as I think we've discussed before, a little over half of this pool is made up of county funds. The remainder of it is schools. Schools is by far the majority of that remainder. The rest of it represents fire districts and other smaller districts throughout the county. What the county chooses to do with that money really falls back on your board. Right now, when we apportion that interest, we're doing it at the fund level. So basically, everyone's getting paid based off where, the amount of money that was in each of those funds. So it's proportional to how much money any agency had within its account and also where it had directed that money to be. But during the budget process, that's where your board decides that. So this will come full circle, and then that's something that you guys are going to have to figure out.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Green?
Thank you for the presentation. It's taken a little while, but I think I'm getting there. I think I'm understanding at least 20, 25% of what you're saying, and I feel good about that 25%. I'm also seeing the first podcast. This is really, this is, I'm glad our funds are doing so well, but it's like you're taking a look at the nation as a whole and economic indicators and interest rates, and it's just fascinating. That information is as helpful, arguably, for our private investors as public investors. The only question I had was semantic, and it's not a big chunk of holdings, but supranational was a term I hadn't heard before. I guess that refers to international investing. And it's less than 1.5% of our portfolio, but sometimes people do have questions about if funds are being invested abroad and how they're being invested abroad. And I don't necessarily need a breakdown on that today if you don't have that information. But could you just highlight very briefly what a supranational investment is and what these two funds are doing?
Carlos, can I kick that one back to you?
Absolutely. So a supranational bond, supranational debt is simply debt from World Bank umbrella organizations. Those were allowed by California Government Code in 2014, and there are a few reasons why they were included in code, primarily because in 2014, federal agencies and government-sponsored enterprises that you do purchase, they were issuing less and less, and local government investors needed more options to be able to diversify the portfolio. And they settled on supranational securities. And the reason that they settled on these is because there are many supranational organizations under the World Bank umbrella, and also others that aren't under the World Bank umbrella, but they settled on three of them. They are the Inter-American Development Bank, the International Bank for Reconstruction and Development, and IFC, International Finance Corporation is what it's called. The three of them are dollar-denominated, and they are domiciled here in the United States, in Washington, DC. And the backing is from the United States government and all the member agencies that have signed on to the agreement for that particular supranational organization. Their primary purpose is to help poverty eradication with projects in Latin America, in the Caribbean Basin. They're very well-managed. They have long-term track records of strong financial management. Currently, they're AAA rated by all three rating agencies. Even the US government is in AAA rated right now by all three agencies. So for that reason, they were included. It's an opportunity for local governments to diversify their portfolio in a very safe manner.
Thank you.
I have a couple of comments and questions. One is on page 22 of the report, there's a negative percentage in the portfolio from account receivable payable cash of negative 0.62%. Just kind of curious if we pulled out money early and had to pay a penalty or what the explanation might be for that?
So that is not the case on this. This actually has to do with the change in the reporting structure that Chandler has. Now it's a, and Carlos can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but now it's a trade-based reporting system. There's actually a much larger portal that we now have access to where we can go in and get a more detailed breakdown. But because it's a trade-based system now, it has to account for essentially money that's in transit so that we're not doubly reporting something. Because this report is a moment in time, we have to account for sales or maturities that are happening. And that's what that adjustment is. That's basically an adjustment to our sheet here to reflect that money that is in transit. Unless, Carlos, do you want to add anything to that?
No, that's exactly what it is. When you buy these securities, you enter into a trade with a broker, and then the actual money exchanges hands, the money in the security exchanges hands a few days later. So there's a time lag. And we recently changed our portfolio accounting system to better capture your positions on a trade date basis. It's more, it's a practice that's more accepted from an accounting perspective. The term is GAAP, generally Accepted Accounting Principles. From an accounting principle, it's superior when you recognize a security that you own or a transaction that you've entered into from the date that you entered into it, rather than from the date that the money exchanges hands. So it's exactly what your Treasury Tax Collector just described. It's money in transit. So from a trade date basis, we entered into a trade, we bought a security, and we book it in your statements as holding it. But in this case, because the month-end was a weekend, the trade did not settle until the following month, basically the first of the following month. So in order to balance the portfolio, we show that you own the security, even though you haven't paid for it yet. And so the cash is still sitting in your account, and you're holding the security in your books. So we have to adjust that and create a payable to offset that. And it just means that it's money that you're going to be paying out the first of the next month, which you already did. And that is, you will be able to see it on, if you look at the holdings report. In fact, I can really briefly just show it to you. I've got it right up, if you're able to see my screen. This is the holdings report for the consolidated. Here is the payable for 3,649,511, so it's payable. You have some receivables as well. It's money that's due to you, but there's that 3,649. And if I, that's the holdings. And if I go to the transactions, which I'm going to do right now, there are the purchases. And you can see that the settlement date is, this is through March 31st, you can see right here. But the settlement date for this particular bond, this was a mortgage-backed, a federal agency mortgage-backed security. It's settled on the first of the following month. And there is your 3,649,511. So you own this security, but you hadn't, the money hadn't left yet, so we have to book it as a payable.
Appreciate that response. Thank you very much. There was also, I wanted to bring up the concept of what we did not make potentially this past quarter or potentially over the course of the year. We borrowed $3 million from our general fund and $1 million from social services that was in reserves. Those could be and probably are eligible for being used in our investments. At 3%, we're looking at maybe $120,000 over the course of a year, and that's just me making some basic math. I'm wondering if there's a way to get the potential overall loss from that activity? Not because I think that it's something that is bad that we did, but something that we need to tell the state that this is the result of the actions that have taken, that we weren't able to invest and we missed out on bringing these funds to our community. I know in medical billing, there is ways to get interest if there is a problem on the source, on the side of the reimbursement. But I think having those numbers available would be really useful to at least bring that to the state's attention and say, hey, this was supposed to be paid a year ago before you were in a deficit budget, and now you're probably going to say no to us to giving us interest because of the budget, but yet these payments were due a year ago, and we've had to take a loss because of your inability to reimburse us in time. And so I'm thinking in our investment pool that that has the potential to impact it. And before I continue, please, has there been an impact? Is there the potential for an impact? And how can we figure out what that amount might be?
Yes, I think the impact you've described is just roughly correct, that that's the impact of the county. If it were to continue for an extended period, there is an impact to treasury pool operations in general. Like I said, just combined with everything else, that increased uncertainty may lead us to be more liquid. However, right now, there's that inverted yield curve that was described. So we're actually earning more in the short-term securities. So the money we're keeping short, we're actually earning the highest rate on, which is an unusual situation. I wouldn't expect that to continue. But if the state would honor any kind of request for reimbursement, our office is happy to work with Behavioral Health or Admin to help calculate out what that would be if we need to look at the quarterly pool rate. We could, I'm sure, come up with a more specific number. I don't know if the state would honor that request, but if that's something the county wants to do, we can certainly help calculate that.
And I don't know that they would honor it at all, but I think personally, and I don't know if the rest of the board agrees, that it would be something to share with them and let them know that this is our loss based on their activities and their lack of activities. Not sure if others want to make a statement on that or agree or disagree. We'll leave it at that. My next one is--
We could track it and then decide if we want to communicate it.
Be willing to do that, obviously knowing those numbers. It's always great to have those arguments when we're having the conversation.
And then my last one is, I believe we started this new policy and all of these reports starting in January of '21 or '22, I forget which year, but in January. Is that when our annual reports are typically meant to be, is in January?
So we do, I mean, essentially the quarterly report that you get June 30th, well, I mean, we do it in July or August, that represents the annual report to the board. We're doing the quarterly reporting along the way. So our quarterly reporting is actually meeting the same-- So, our quarterly reporting is actually meeting the same criteria as the annual. So, that's why you're not seeing a big difference. If anything, we could probably trim the quarterly report back. But yeah, so you'll continue to see the same type of reporting. It's just going to change based off, there's been a few changes with GAAP reporting standards and some other legislative changes over the last few years. But what you've seen since 2021 is roughly what you'll continue to get.
Okay. And the reason I ask is, I feel like there's a part of this that isn't very transparent. I know I listen into fire district meetings. I listen into school board meetings just to keep up with what's going on. And I don't hear of, this is what we've received. I have the total number. We're at 4.3 for the quarter. But it would be nice annually to say, this is how much the fire districts received from this investment. This is how much the school district, doesn't have to be individualized to each one. I think that's too much. But just because right now, I don't know the specific number of, out of the 4.3, what is for the county general fund or what is coming back to the county. And I would like to see an annual report that has that level of transparency so that we can recognize what the investment is for all of those districts that are taking part in our investment pool. And again, not sure if the rest of the board would agree to that.
I would say we can readily provide that apportionment at the fund level. And many of these districts hold multiple funds. So, I think my office can sort of readily provide that data by fund. Beyond that, for a further breakdown, you'd really have to go specific within that district. Like, for instance, with the school district, you're gonna see in their operational fund a certain amount of interest that we've given. But then, if you go into their budget, they're accounting for it in a completely different way. So, I think it's always gonna be a little tough to marry up those two. But at the same time, just to be clear, school districts, for instance, other districts, they do have access into the system. They can see what, what they've received. But yeah, I totally understand the desire for that broader picture, and that's readily attainable at the fund level.
Because we're investing for all of them, and our report is very big-picture, but not, not specific to the county schools and so on and so forth. And not sure if board members agree to seeing that level of detail. And again, not looking for the nitty-gritty funds, but just schools, fire districts, county, and whoever else are the, the major components of it.
Well, that, that sounds more than just requesting the fund level.
Yeah, the fund level report is what I can-
Yeah, that's what I would like to see.
System, but then to break down what those are, someone would have to look at it and identify, you know, which funds go to Lakeport Unified.
And I don't need to break down.
Okay.
So, I mean, well, I don't agree that we're not being transparent. I think this is a new situation that we're dealing with, and now we can be more transparent as we go. So, I don't like, I don't, I don't want to agree to something that seems negative, which is not. We're growing. We're learning. I do like the idea of what you're saying, though, is having a little more in-depth. Because I was, you, you asked a couple of questions I was gonna ask already, so it covers it. And I do know that the, some of the agencies, they, they can look into this on their own as well, but it would be good to have.
They can, and they do.
What's that?
They can, and they do.
Yeah, yeah.
But for our side of it, it would be helpful to see the fund levels.
We can definitely include that breakdown in the future.
And I will admit, maybe not the best choice of words, though. Appreciate and agree, just for looking for that extra.
So, just a question, then, at the yearly report, that's when we'd see the fund level? Or you're gonna try and add it into the quarterly? I would be fine with the yearly report. So, then you could start from there just on the yearly basis.
Sure, that could work out well, especially because the next report I do will be that, that annual report. So, I can include that breakdown then, and you can see it. And that'll give you an idea of what we can readily do, and if you have other questions, we could address them then.
Thank you very much.
Just want to make a point, too, obviously, as Supervisor Pyska said, just seeing the report and the direction we're going. What a world of difference over the past few years. So, we are, this board was actively working towards where we're at now with Patrick, the new tax collector, and moving forward with these investments. So, good job, Admin. Good job, everybody, moving this thing forward. Because we're making positive strides in the right direction. That is positive.
Thank you. And I'd also like to take the opportunity to thank Treasury staff because this program has been obviously successful, but it is an increased workload. There's a lot of work that goes into making it work. So, thank you to Liz and the other staff in the office for making this happen on our end, too.
Yep. Thank you very much. Thank you, Liz. Thank you, everyone else.
Just wanted to add one, just to expound off of what Supervisor Simon said. Just, you know, our groups that invest in this as well, the education and the fire departments, they struggle with a lot of situations that we do, like law enforcement had the issues with bringing people in and whatnot. So, these funds help tremendously or will help tremendously in that aspect as well. I know that Supervisor Espaté, we go to the chiefs' meetings sometimes and whatnot, and they have a lot of issues retaining and recruiting and things like that. So, this is another way to help, you know, so just that, like, like was, you all were saying, especially Supervisor Simon, about coming into this direction and building these funds. It's gonna help in that aspect as well. So, thank you, Pat and Liz, and the whole department. So, I-
All right, with nothing further, let's go ahead and open up for public comment. I see nobody get, oh, please come on up.
Michael Weg, Michael Wagner.
Is this thing working?
Yeah.
Thank you, Board, and everybody for being here today to go over this stuff. Man, what, what huge steps you guys have made in the past couple of years. I remember when we first went over this, what, two, three years ago, and it was like, oh, my goodness. So, with that, like, just absolutely admirable and great job in turning those numbers around and making things work. I know Patrick individually has done a huge amount of effort put forward to see all that happen, as well as each and every single one of you guys. I did have just a question, and I'm not sure if Patrick could answer it, or maybe Carlos would be more appropriate. With the heavy investment into the US Treasury bonds and the increase or the rate of increase that we've seen, my, my question would be, based on the 35% of investment, how much did we wind up losing? Or, I'm not even sure if that's the right term, with the increases in rates from the Fed since inception?
I think I can address that question. I think you're referring to the loss in market value of the fund. As rates increase, those bonds we hold are dropping in value. But the difference is, we're holding them until maturity. So, if we had to sell a bond early, we would take that loss. But because we're holding it until the end, we're not incurring that loss. Because it's true, as we were purchasing bonds, rates would increase just within a week, and our market value would drop. So, if we had not had the cash on hand and had to sell that bond in order to pay our bills, we would have incurred a loss. But we kept enough money liquid that we did not face that situation. So, while there could have been a loss realized, we have not realized a loss here in our pool.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what we mean is, we haven't realized a loss yet. Is that correct? Meaning, if, if the rates continue to climb as opposed to go in reverse, eventually, that paper loss will turn into a real loss. But I could be totally wrong. I'm, I'm not an expert.
I would say that's not the case with the type of securities we hold. The US Treasury bonds that we hold, we retain that face value. So, when we, when they reach maturity, we are not going to realize a loss. The only way that we do is if we have to sell early, and that would reference why we're keeping that larger amount of money liquid. Perhaps we could have gotten away with less, but we were hedging and just sort of trying to be cautious in this. And Carlos, I don't know if you had anything to add on this?
I do. The way that you described it is exactly right. These, these are loans and, and which come with an income stream, that's your, your interest. And the value of that income stream can go up or down depending on what other investment opportunities that come before you while you hold that bond. And of course, as you correctly stated, interest rates have risen, which have devalued, if they've dropped the value of the county's holdings since, since that time, since rates have risen. But that, that drop in value is simply on paper. It will not be realized unless the, unless the security or the entire portfolio, for that matter, is sold. Now, we do have the ability and sometimes do sell before maturity, and that sale can incur a gain or a loss on principle. But generally, when we do it to rebalance the portfolio, to increase liquidity, to improve credit quality, any of those reasons, when we do that, we're generally transferring into, we turn around and reinvest into a bond that's generally yielding more, which makes up for that loss. And that's, that's an active management component that we do. But to your point, yes, there has been a drop in value in the investments. To give you an idea, and I just pulled up the March statement for these investments from last year, and I'm comparing them with the March statements for these investments for this year. Now, last year, the portfolio was sitting on a $10 million unrealized loss, meaning a loss on paper. We would not be, it would not be incurred because we're basically holding to maturity. It was about $10 million, and that was because of the rapid run-up in interest rates between 2022 and 2020, and the end of 2023. That figure today, that $10 million negative figure, for your information, is now 5.5 negative. So, it basically tells you that this portfolio has actually, in the past year, increased in value. We've actually gained the value, the fair value of the portfolio over the past year has gone up. But none of that really plays into the apportionment. None of it really plays into, unless things are sold before maturity.
Understood. Thank you very much. And just one last question, I'll get out of everybody's hair. When we look at our, our portfolio, use that term loosely, when we're looking at like a 5% return, my question would be, how do we make that better? I, I think, you know, we're, we're shooting for like seven, if, if we were trying. My question would be, how do we make it better? I think we've done great. And my question would just be, how do we make those yields better?
Thank you, Mr. Wagner.
Well, we're under, I, I guess in terms of a target rate, we're under pretty strict limitations as a Treasury pool of what we can invest in. We can't invest in a lot of securities that, let's say, you see one of the pension pools invest in. So, we're, we're capped a little lower. The highest rates out there are between, you know, 5.5 and 5.6% from, from what I've seen in some of the pools. But the trade-off is, those are very short-term. So, I, I think what's tough and what we've been working with Chandler on trying to balance is, we want to achieve a higher rate, but at the same time, we want to remain cautious and keep all of our investments safe and achieve the liquidity we need. So, I think that's why we'll continue to grow. We've been slowly increasing that rate, especially because our portfolio is fairly young. But at some point, if rates were to stay the same in the next year or two, I think we'd level off somewhere under that figure. Because in order to get a higher rate of return, we'd probably always have to go shorter or take a, a risk level that we're likely unwilling to do.
And I believe, I remember the meetings with Supervisor Pyska, our main topics were safe, secure, and liquid.
Yes.
And, and I think that's just always our mindset and how it is that we invest to ensure that we're always improving and having it available for us. So... Yes, next comment.
I'm Joan Moss, and I have a question about where you go if you don't understand. A friend of mine had an experience, but I have been very well-received at the tax collectors. I told you that the other day. But there are people who are working and own property, and things are explained to them that they don't understand. And it could be that they don't understand English. They could be from, from Mexico. It could be that they never got trained. And where can they go to get this all explained if they don't understand? A person owns property and, and it was-
And Joan, I, I want to make sure that we're talking about the investment pool. This has nothing to do with properties. And we're not talking about the tax collector or his office. We're talking-
Where do we go if we want all this explained so we understand what you're talking about? Thank you.
I think as far as the investment pool material goes, we do post the entire report, which does include a glossary, and, and that may help. Otherwise, I would encourage anyone with further questions, they could go to the, perhaps the library and try to access further resources there.
Okay, thank you for that. And, and I empathize, Joan. I know in one of our meetings with Carlos, I said that he knows more about money than I will ever know about money. He's obviously gone through a lengthy amount of education to get to the status that he is and his knowledge and capacity to do what he does. This is definitely not a layman report to understand. But I think that the great, simple understanding is, our investment is working to our benefit, including our schools and fire districts and others that are a part of the investment. And right now, we are doing better than we have done in the last 10 years in making sure that we are seeing the benefits from this, and we'll continue doing so. And even just these reports at the Board of Supervisors are relatively new in the past 10 years. So, appreciate the question, and yes, it's, it's, it's some very heavy stuff. Do we have any hands up in Zoom? All right, so we bring it back to the board. We have Supervisor Green.
Yeah, just very briefly, if only because I raised the question, I, I was doing a little surfing during the discussion here. So, the, the two supranationals basically are development banks and structures. So, the one inter-American focuses solely on Latin American Caribbean countries. The other one, International Bank of Reconstruction Development, aka the World Bank, does fund projects in the Middle East, among other regions. But the whole structure of the World Bank and what they appear to be focused on is emergency funding in war-torn regions, including Ukraine and the West Bank. Economic support, lifting up economic opportunities for women. And there have been some recent funding through the World Bank in support of humanitarian assistance for Gaza and the West Bank. And there's nothing in here that entitates any other type of assistance that would be military in nature. So, I just wanted to highlight that. I think people can have questions when we're investing abroad, what that money goes for. These particular funds appear to be very appropriate, and I'm glad to see it.
Thank you very much. And I believe we need to accept-
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, I'll move to accept the March 31st, 2024 report of Lake County pooled investments. I know I got ahead of you there, but-
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Carlos, thank you very much for your work.
Thank you, Supervisors, and thank you, Treasury Tax Collector. We'll see you in the next one.